January the 12th, 2021, Board of Education meeting to order. And I'd like to start with a moment of silence. And I would like for you especially to remember the family of Gary Jennings. He passed away this past weekend. And he's a mainstay in our community, a leader in our community, a very hard worker, a business owner. There's very, very little aspect that he wasn't involved in in our county. And he'll be a great loss. So if you will, please join me in just a moment of silence.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to recognize Scott Bowman for our pledge of allegiance.
If you'll please stand with me.
Attention, saluting, pledging. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America extends one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Board members, you've had the opportunity to review the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
So that Deborah can get it in a minute. She's having a hard time with masks on.
Okay, all right. That was, motion to approve was Marty Lautermilch, and the second was Bridget Ryan. And is there any discussion? If so, if you approve the consent agenda, please say yes.
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 Any opposed, please say no. Motion carries. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Dr. Jennifer Hefner for our honors and recognitions.
Thank you, Chairman Schrum and board members. It is always a pleasure to be able to be involved in this part of the meeting. I would ask Board Member David Odom to join me with the first recognition, please. Last month, we recognized our holiday card winners, and one young lady was unable to attend the meeting. It is my pleasure this evening to recognize her. We are proud to present Lillian Faith Hamby with her gift bag that includes a framed copy of the artwork that she submitted, 30 cards that she can share with family and friends. And I'm going to put a little caveat in here. I actually received a Christmas card yesterday. And what that means is, is that Christmas got to be extended for me way beyond one day. So that was a thrill. I'm one of those people. I would like to celebrate Christmas every day of the year if I could. But don't worry, your friends and family will love them. And also, in this bag, you have a $25 gift card. Her artwork was featured in the Talesville Times, on the district's website, on social media, and it actually was also part of a card that I was able to send to other school systems on behalf of Alexander County. Lillian is a fourth grade student at Sugarloaf Elementary School, and she is the daughter of Ricky and Monica Hamby. Please join me in recognizing Lillian Hamby.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I'm very proud of you. There's your...
They'll be back.
And why don't you step over? Mrs. Mead's going to get your picture with Mr. Odom and his family. You can get a picture too, okay?
Can she take her mask off? Okay, good. Mom said she can take her mask off. Wonderful. And stay there so mom and dad can get a good picture. Thank you. Thanks for bringing her tonight. I am so glad you got to be here. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Do you want me to hold something for you? You good? Okay, good. Thank you.
Another round of applause, please. Each year, the Alexander Chapter of the North Carolina Federation of Republican Women hosts an Americanism essay contest open to all fourth grade students. This year's prompt was, "Who was Romulus Zachariah Lenny and what or were his contributions to Alexander County?" Sherri Weatherspoon is here this evening to make some presentations to a couple of our students. I would invite Sherri to the podium.
Absolutely. If you're speaking, take your mask off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get my eyes on him. I know all about that.
At the beginning of the school year, the Alexander County Republican Women's Club put an essay into the school system, as she was saying, Zachariah Romulus Lenny. Who was he and what was his contributions to Alexander County? So he was born in 1841 in Rutherford County, but he made Alexander County his home. He attended Dr. Millen's School and York Collegiate Institute in Taylorsville. He joined the Confederate Army at 19 and was a private, was seriously wounded and discharged from service. After the war, he started, he studied agriculture and law, licensed in 1868. He opened a law practice in Taylorsville, elected to the North Carolina Senate as a Democrat in 1870, and served three terms. He was instrumental in the construction of the Alexander County Railroad, then known as the Statesville and Western Railroad. The Ingers are painted green and gold and called the June Bug Line because of this man. Then he ran as a Republican for the U.S. House and won, and served three terms. In debate concerning the IRS, he represented the views of his mountain supporters. They tried to supplement their income by distilling brandy and whiskey outside the law. They were hurt by the excise tax and the federal government placed on spirits. And throughout his career, he tried to change this form of taxation. In the field of foreign affairs, he was inclined to vote with the majority. He supported the declaration of war against Spain and the Spanish-American War and the annexation of Hawaii. However, he didn't favor the occupation of the Philippines because he feared the people were too different from Americans. He spoke out in favor of a protective tariff and against the crime of lynching. He's the grandfather, the great-grandfather of Romulus Lenny, the playwright, and great-great-granddaughter of Golden Globe-winning actress Laura Lenny. He had a nickname. They called him Bull Moose or Bull of the Brushies for his dominating presence in the courtroom and on the house floor. He kept your attention. He donated to Appalachian School, Training School in Boone, which was later known as Appalachian State University. And one of his quotes is on one of the doorways, "Learning, the handmaid of loyalty and liberty. A vote governs better than the crown." This was our Romulus Zachariah Lenny. Winning first place is Addison Barnes from Sugarloaf. Let me just call them both up. And winning second place is Caleb Feimster from Stony Point. Now, there was a monetary prize that went with this, and we gave that out before Christmas. We took it to the schools and gave it to them personally. Oh, okay. We have one too. This is from us.
Congratulations.
And there you go.
Wonderful. And Sherri, why don't you go over here with the children for the picture?
Yes, you must.
Parents, if you want to come up and get a picture, please do that also.
Let the parents get some pictures, yes. Congratulations.
Wonderful. Another round of applause. And Dr. Curry, if you'll come up to help me with the next presentations. The North Carolina School Boards Association sponsors the annual recognition for school board members during the month of January each year. Alexander County Schools is proud to join with other districts throughout the state to recognize the impact and contributions that school board members make to their communities. We benefit every day from the dedicated energies and countless hours devoted by a group of more than 700 men and women across the state. These people unselfishly contribute their time and talents toward the advancement of public education. Even though we are making a special effort during January to show appreciation to our school board members, we recognize their contributions reflect a year-round commitment on their part. They are dedicated individuals who are committed to the continual success of our public schools and students. We are so blessed in Alexander County to have a seven-member Board of Education. They serve the entire school system, and they represent different districts throughout the county. I would like to recognize each member of our Board of Education. And we do have a gift of our appreciation so that you can enjoy. I'm going to tell you, there are all kinds of goodies. You know how Deborah does things. She said, "Dr. Hefner, the bag's not big enough for everything." So I've put goodies inside of goodies in the bag. So when you get home this evening, make sure that you go through everything, okay? And I'm not going to do you like I did my nieces and nephews one year. I recycle boxes and all kinds of things at my house. And the funniest thing, they opened up a gift from Aunt Jen, and they said, "Oh, Aunt Jen, Christmas lights. Thank you." And I said, "Well, that's just the box. Open it, there's something else. That's a recycled box." So I didn't recycle anything for you all tonight, but please go through everything thoroughly so you get all your goodies. We're going to start with our chairman for the year, and that is Mr. Harry Schrum. Please give him a round of applause.
Thank you very much.
Followed by our vice chairman, Mr. David Odom. And next, we have Board Member Scott Bowman.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you so much.
Dr. Curry only has five of her 10,000 steps for the day, so I'm going to let her keep walking. Next, we have Board Member Matt Cooksey. Followed by Board Member Marty Lautermilch. And then I bet you can't guess who gets the pink tissue. Board Member Bridget Ryan. And last, but certainly not least, Board Member Raimi Robinson. And Renee, do you want to do any kind of picture now, or do you want to do that afterwards? Oh, Renee went back here. Okay, well, we'll grab a picture afterwards. On your tables, those obviously are all kinds of goodies from schools and different folks. At this time, if you don't care, I would just ask that you move those so that we can get you on camera and hear you as far as if you have any kind of speaking during the meeting. But please know that the schools and our students and staff, they certainly appreciate you also. So enjoy all your goodies, and we'll take time tonight to load everything up so that you can get all that home. Thank you.
Dr. Hefner, can I say something?
Yes.
I always am humbled at our January meeting, and it's just amazing to know that the schools pour out what they do to us.
They're wonderful. They're wonderful. Thank you all. You're pretty wonderful, too.
Thanks.
Okay, did we have anyone sign up for public comment?
No.
No, okay. All right, moving on. Board members, I think mistakenly, I'm not sure, but I'm thinking mistakenly, I said consent agenda at the first when we were approving the agenda. If there needs to be any discussion about the agenda, I think we're okay there. But at this time, you've had the opportunity to review the consent agenda. So do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Bridget Ryan was the motion, and Scott Bowman was the second. Do we have any discussion?
I have one question, just because I'm new to this. On the state budget, items on the agenda, the code, there was some, I mean, even though it showed an increase overall, there was a decrease, and I'm figuring...
Mr. Robinson, will you take off your...
I'm sorry. I am so sorry.
That's okay. We just couldn't understand you.
I'm used to talking in it all day, and so I just totally forget. On the budget, even though it showed an increase, there was a decrease. And I'm figuring that that's probably CARES funding. Is that the abbreviation? Is that the CF? Am I reading too much into that? I'm wondering if a little bit of that is not CARES funding? I was just wondering, you know, I noticed there was a decrease in health support, but yet an increase in PPE. Is that something Raleigh dictates that, or is that kind of local decisions?
I'm going to let Chief Finance Officer Sharon Mahaffey. She's here. She's coming to the podium to answer your question.
Thank you.
Okay. With the CARES Act funding, the, not CARES Act, the CRF funds.
Okay.
What happened was, you know, we started talking about they're very specific in what they can be spent for.
Okay.
And I guess they heard the police from school systems that there was money there they could not spend. Like, we had no one to contract with for psychological or medical services. There was no one available. So they allowed us to move the money into different categories. So I would like, move the money, the $31,000 we had for the medical expenses down into a code where we could use it.
Okay. So you do still have some flexibility that allows you locally to be able to do this?
Yes.
And that, being you, and it didn't hit me till the last minute about that code, and that's why I was curious. I saw the decrease, but yet I saw the big jump. And I wondered if that was something Raleigh said, "Hey, this is what it's got to be," or did you have that flexibility inside the fund?
We did.
Okay, thank you.
And also, we had, I think, discussed that those funds expired on December 30th, and they extended them to December 31st, 2021.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Everyone in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say yes.
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 Anyone opposed, please say no. Okay. All right, we'll move on to monthly reports. I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, and I'd like to recognize Ms. Janelle Lingel for an update on Taylorsville Elementary School.
Good evening, Chairman Schrum and members of the board and Dr. Hefner. It's my privilege to be able to stand before you again tonight just to bring you an update as to the great things that are continuing to happen at Taylorsville Elementary. I want to thank you in advance for just allowing me a few minutes of your time this evening, and I'm going to attempt to set a world record amongst the principals for presentations. So we'll see how that goes. As you know, this has been a year unlike any other. But at Taylorsville, our head slide here just kind of wraps it all up in one. Clear goals with perseverance and positive mindsets equal success. And at Taylorsville, we believe that that continual pressure produces diamonds, and that's what our students are. Next slide, please. Having heard several reports already this year, you guys are very aware of the challenges that we all face every day in the midst of COVID-19. And it has indeed been a year unlike any other. Kindness is a fundamental foundation for Alexander County and for Taylorsville Elementary. And just a quick definition of that is loaning someone your strength instead of reminding them of their weaknesses. And we've all felt weak at some point during the past year. Beginning with our drive-through open house in the pouring rain, to new procedures for everyone, which include social distancing and wearing masks and washing our hands all the time, we have continued to adapt and move forward. Right now, we have 54 staff at Taylorsville serving 243 students. We welcomed nine new students to our Cougar Cub family just this past week when the second semester started. Three and a half specials, one amazing instructional coach in Kelly Tease, in addition to our support staff, and then, of course, myself. Next slide, please. At the onset of COVID in March, we were at core in math and had moved to above 70% in reading just in the year prior to with our last testing cycle. With no EOG, new EOG data to report, we continue with our very high expectations and our consistency among the staff and students at Taylorsville Elementary. What you see in the slide is examples of our learning-focused schools' high-yield strategies that have become just part of the fiber of our conversations, which include essential questions and graphic organizers, including one, a few that are fundamental to Taylorsville, including Big Five and Four Block, which were used during math instruction and main idea tables. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that next. Next slide, please. We have some non-negotiables, unwavering expectations at Taylorsville that we've built over the past four to five years. And, you know, some of them have been in place since I started, and some of them we have kind of developed together as our culture has changed at Taylorsville. Morning meetings, social, emotional health, educating the whole child and taking care of the whole person as adults that serve our children is critical. Consistency is the key. Morning meetings, speaking in complete sentences, you've heard me talk about that, and hopefully when you visited in times past, you've noticed that amongst our students and our staff. Routines and structure. Kids thrive in routines and structure. Repetitive and explicit instruction, assuming that they don't know. That's what we have to do. Kids have to hear it over and over and over again. And an ELA progression that has developed using, starting in kindergarten through fifth grade, very common language, very common structures that we have in place, including Big Five, plot maps, main idea tables, and the use of the acronym TREASURE. New for this year, though, however, highlighted in yellow, we have been forced to learn to teach in a different way through remote learning and digital instruction. Finding the best implementation of technology for both face-to-face and remote learning days has been a challenge, and finding that balance between traditional strategies and digital strategies. These goals partner with our core beliefs at Taylorsville around the impact of relationships, which is core to me. I'm about relationships and making sure that these kids know that we're going to be there for them. And building stamina, how to work under pressure. My gosh, the tremendous pressure that we've all been under. It's a life skill that we all need to perfect and continuously work on. Next slide, please. Going a little bit deeper into our ELA progression, pictured here are two of our TAs, Ms. Harrington and Ms. Davis, working during intervention time with students to build those foundational skills. Students begin learning in kindergarten, the Big Five, which includes they use their hand, and you'll see that throughout our building and throughout everything that we do. We use that hand for cougar paws, for our behavior initiatives, and in academics as well. Problem solving, character, problem solution, character setting, and mood. And you can ask any kindergartner part of what the Big Five is by this time, and they should be able to spout off at least a couple of them. Moving towards RAP in, back that slide up if you don't mind just a second. There we go. Moving towards RAP in first and second grade, which, and when children are looking at a passage that they're working on, restate the question or restate the problem, answer the question, and then prove it using the text. And then that moves on into TREASURE and using of our main idea tables and plot maps in the advanced grades. All of this works together to assist students in comprehension of text and understanding the author's craft. What are they trying to tell us in the passage? This staff, under the guidance of Kelly Tease and our master teachers, along with our new teachers, they work together in grade levels and between grade levels in PLC, and they assure that all students reach their greatest potential. And beyond that, we push them just beyond where they're comfortable. And it's okay if they're a little nervous and if they're a little uncomfortable. That's when you grow, like me right now. We have been very proud of our ELA growth in the past few years. We want to stay above the line, and you'll hear me speak of that in just a second. And we want to lead the way in ELA and math for this system and for this state. Next slide, please. In other areas of our school, we offer PD almost weekly, and these are just a few things, a few points I wanted to hit with you tonight. We monitor attendance. Last year, prior to COVID, we were at 94.85. Currently, through December, we were at 97.4 in attendance, which is kind of amazing, but our remote learning days help, and when students are out on quarantine, they're able to work at home, and that has helped our attendance numbers. It's a little deceiving, but we'll take it nonetheless. 97 looks great. Our social worker and counselor, Ms. Gaddy and Ms. Starnes, work tirelessly with our families. Keeping alive our behavior and our behavior expectations, our PBIS. We've had to figure out new ways with social distancing to keep those kids motivated to do the right thing. Summit meetings, I mentioned that last... Summit meetings, I mentioned that last year, is something we started at Taylor's a few years ago, where we, it's just a next level of support with parents to support them. And rather than having them in the building, we have continued that. Four to six a week, I think I had five today via Zoom or telephone conference. And building that relationship with a parent is critical because once they know and understand that we're here for them as a person and understand the struggles that they're having with COVID and just life in general, they're more likely to help support us in understanding that we're on the same team with their children. Sanford Harmony, that mental health piece, that's been implemented in all grade levels. And then going back to the data, going deep into that data in PLCs and making sure that our teachers understand what our students need. We protect fiercely our reading and math blocks of 120 and 90 minutes, and then using those things that I mentioned before, the continual conversations and common language that we have in our school. It all works together. It has to. Explicit, intentional, and repetitive, that's the Taylor'sville way. And it's proven to be very successful. Next slide, please. Just a few other things I wanted to mention, I've kind of spoken to it already, but those digital opportunities, how do we engage students remotely? You know, little things that we've had to learn, like making sure your camera's on. Are you looking at me? Don't hide just below the screen, okay? Little things like that that we've learned. Oh, my gosh, we've learned so much. Keeping teachers accountable and our staff leadership through PLCs and participation in leadership team and that MTSS process. And then, of course, continuing those learning-focused conversations that, once again, is part of the fiber of what we are here in Alexander County now. High expectations, but relationships with support. And we understand the stress, and it's, y'all spend so hard. It is so hard, but our teachers are so resilient, and I just can't speak enough about them. Next slide, please. Building language functions, and this is not just about ELA. It's about how, teaching our students how to use their words to communicate appropriately in the different situations that they face. Okay, this goes back to our above and below the line. Everybody in the world knows, when you draw a line in the sand, what that means. And we have implemented that at Taylor'sville. Kindness, opened up the first slide with kindness, the definition of that, and showing respect. Every day, we focus on effective communication and how behavior is a direct reflection of our personal growth. But it also represents us as a school and a community. Helping students truly understand how to communicate in different situations helps them build confidence and better prepare for their future socially and academically. You've heard me describe Roar before, respect others, accept responsibility, and what it means to be above the line. Blending our PBIS goals with our academic and mental health goals. Going back to that slide with the Big Five, in the academics and the Big Five and kindness, what that means. It helps prepare our child for his or her future. At Taylor'sville, I hope you know that being a Cougar Cub means something. It means something to our students and our staff, and they respect it, and it matters. Next slide. Finally, this community is amazing. We continue to be thankful for the tremendous support of this school. Last spring, we sent out some parent and student surveys to see, you know, what do you need? We've been doing some things for a while now. What do you need? What would make us better? And over and over, the survey said, they love music, and they love PE, and they love all this. But they don't want computer lab anymore. They've got lots of technology. They were getting that all the time. They said, Ms. Lingle, we want some art. Can we have some art classes? Can we do something with that? And so we took that to heart. And this year, we have created an arts and craft as part of our specials rotation. They get to go every other week in cooperation with our music teacher and our guidance rotation. And one of our TAs, Ms. Long, has taken that bull by the horns and has attacked Pinterest and figured out some fun stuff to do. Our Cubs are loving this opportunity. You see some of the things that they've displayed here. We received a grant by a local Thrive It Action Grant donated by a community member, Tammy West, in memory of her late husband. And that allowed us to kickstart this program with $250 to make art, to buy some art supplies. And once again, Alexander County continues to prove that if there's a need, we find a way. The flood was a great demonstration of that, and this is just a small example of how we don't ask for much, and we try to be good stewards of what we have, and the Lord blesses us for that. It's a testament to Alexander County strong. Next slide, please. I close this evening with gratitude and for giving me this opportunity. This is a great school. And my prayer is that I continue to make you proud and that we are a beacon. So you'll never regret being kind and showing a child the way. Can I answer any questions for you?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of questions.
I just had one quick comment. We can definitely tell where your heart is. Thank you for what you're doing, Taylor's.
Ms. Lingle, I'm gonna call you probably Janelle more times than Ms. Lingle. But, you know, we've known each other for a long time, and I hold you in very high regard. I think what you helped to do at Taylor's was phenomenal. And, but I took a few notes here while you've sat up here and give this presentation. And a couple of things that's keyed in to me and to my mind, and some of those words was like, it's tough, it's hard, there's a lot of pressure. It's not easy, but we're resilient. And, you know, there's not a lot that a board can do. And, you know, it's funny that we're being recognized up here tonight for all that we've done as a board. And speaking of, some of these others have served a lot longer than I have. But, you know, it's almost a little sobering to know that what we have, what we're going through at this time through this pandemic, it's not been easy for anybody, any of us.
Right.
And the board, you know, we're, a lot of this COVID stuff is data-driven. And we base our decisions on what the superintendent tells us through the data and the professionals and things like that. But at the end of the day, we can't go into schools. We can't go to places. We can't do the things that we, that I am used to doing as a board member. So just hold on to that thought for just a minute, and I'll come back to that. But the question I have for you is, what's the overall morale of your students, your staff, and your parents through this whole thing? We've been dealing with it for a while now. What is your, the truthful overall morale for everybody now?
Right. Kids love school. They really do. And I guess the main thing is that they have been so adaptable. And, you know, we were, we were in fear of having to wrestle them about these masks and spacing, and they just have adapted and done, do what you ask. You know, you set that expectation, and kids will rise to meet it. The morale, most of the time, is very positive, and it's been, teachers want to work, and they want to serve our kids, and they want to see them. But I'm not gonna lie, there's some fear. It's uneasy, you know, walking into a situation where you know that you're at risk. And regardless of all the precautions we take, at this point in the game, we are all at risk every single day right now. And so as a board responding to what you said about there's not much you can do, and we miss you guys being in the school, gosh, I want y'all in and seeing what we're doing. But that just can't happen right now, and it can be a little lonely. And, but the steps that you have taken and Dr. Hefner in the central office has taken to get us some help with the additional TAs, and, you know, when we've been able to hire those folks has been critical because we need to be able to space kids out as much as we can, as often as we can, while still serving them. But there are days and times when, you know, in the past two weeks, and I can only speak for me, for my staff, but we have been as thin as we could possibly be and still be up.
That was gonna bring my next question. Are you having, are you seeing the problems of this board discussed several months ago about staffing, getting subs? Can you get on, if you wanted to get on the phone tomorrow, could you get on the phone or however you do it, and find somebody to cover a classroom? I mean, is it that, are we at that point yet?
We are using our teacher assistants the vast majority of the time. In the few days that I've had multiple needs for subs in the building, last week being a prime example, I had one person willing to come in that wasn't, that was just a sub, that was willing to come in and serve. And she did for, she was assigned for two days, but one day was a snow day, so we didn't have to use her that day. But the rest of the time, it's been pulling TAs from their normal duties to cover substitute teachers, which they know that, they've signed up for it, they're willing, but it affects everything. And, but so far, knock on wood, and Taylor'sville has been fairly impacted just due to the nature of our, the student body that we serve, we've been able to cover, thankfully.
And that brings back to the question that I had posed before about the board not being able to do a whole lot. But there is some little things that maybe the board could do. And, you know, is there anything that you know right off the top of your head that, besides the support and everything, that we try our best to give you, that is there anything that we can do as board members collectively through Dr. Hefner? Anything that's not being done right now?
I think that goes back, Marty, to communication. And Dr. Hefner and her team, along with communication with those of us in the trenches in the school level with administration, continuing that open, honest conversation about what it really looks like and being willing to follow the directives of the CDC, which we have to the letter, and following the guidance of those who are in the know to make sure that we all stay safe every day. That's our number, you know, you asked any child in my building, what's Ms. Lingle's number-one job? And they will spout off to you to keep us safe. And it is, and I take that very seriously. Not just children, but every person that's under my charge, just like Dr. Hefner does too. I just would hate for anything so unfortunate to happen under our watch if it can be avoided. And I think having those conversations to be able to make those tough decisions is what it's gonna take. And I appreciate it.
Well, I certainly, I certainly tell you, and this echoed to the others principals and administrators and everyone out there, is, you know, we know it's tough. But quite honestly, if I'm speaking honestly, I don't know how tough it is because I'm not there. I don't have to say, I know how it is at home. I know how it is at work. I know how it is in the community. But you guys are doing a great job. You know, our system is resilient. I just want to do, I want to be able to do something to help ease the pressure. That was one of the big things I heard you just say. And I just, I just feel so, I kind of feel helpless that we are not able to do any more than what we're doing collectively as a board. And so I appreciate everything.
I do thank you for that, and I, you know, and I want to say that one thing that I've learned through this over the, I'm in 28 years now. And I've learned through these past nine or 10 months as we move through this pandemic that I'm gonna lead when asked to lead, and I'm gonna follow when I need to, and I'm gonna control the things that I can control. And when a directive is given, that's what we're gonna do. And we're going to do everything in our possible, that we possibly can to come out of this stronger. So we're in the fire right now. That's okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have two things. First of all, you talked about data, you talked about surveys. You know my past a little bit. I was always a firm believer in the teaching working condition survey. How do you utilize that at your school?
How do we align with it?
How do you, how do you take that data? Are you using that data once it's released every two years?
Yes, it is linked with our school improvement plan and our common needs assessment. We take that information as it comes around every two years. And then the off-year, we send out a separate data. You know, I feel like overall, Taylor'sville has moved very positively in the past few years under my leadership, and I'm hoping that that will continue. But we take that information and apply it to align with our system goals, with our school improvement plans. And then we go back and address each of those goals through your school leadership team and staff meetings each month to try to keep that fresh in our mind.
And I guess one thing jumped out, you know, everybody's had to adapt to technology.
Sure.
And one of the things I noticed was on your, when I was looking online, a lot of the teachers about the ability to give assignments via technology. It just goes to show, we've got a gap in connectivity in this area. And I think your, this, your area that you're serving, I think, you know, it's a case in point that we still got to divide in technology. And I took that when I was looking at your, the results that they released this summer. That was one thing that jumped out at me, and I was just curious, you know, if you use that. I've always been a, I think it's a true, it gives you a lot to work with sometimes.
It does, and it gets you, you know, oftentimes, in the school setting, we see things through our lens, and when that survey comes out, you know, I always, one of the things that I do when I do teacher observations is I script and label teacher, student, what's happening. And then I give that back to the teacher, not as a, just as a reflective tool to say, this is a moment in time through a different set of eyes. You may think you're doing something, but this is what I saw you doing. And so, and it can be very powerful to take that information. And, you know, we try to find a balance between technology and digital and that hands-on tactile learning because students at the elementary level need both. They can't just have screens all the time.
And the second thing was, thank you. I appreciate what you shared. I live it. You know, I know how much your teachers pour into it. And you praised one individual that I hold near and dear to my heart, and that's Kelly Tease.
Absolutely.
When you talk about data, I've been driving at 5:30, 6 o'clock on Friday night before I take my wife to dinner, and Kelly's calling her, she's got some great idea. Your staff's an example of what we got across the whole county. They're pouring their heart and soul right now to keep things going.
Yep.
To not lose ground. Thank you.
There is no off-time right now. It's 24/7. So thank you, Mr. Ruffus. Any other questions?
Speaking from District 2, which Matt Cooksey and I have the distinct honor of representing, you and your staff years ago took a school that was on the brink.
That's right.
It's like a phoenix that has gone through several fires, risen from the ashes. I, for one, as a board member, elected member, am very proud of the work, the dedication, the sacrifice, and the leadership at Taylor'sville Elementary School. And I do miss visiting schools greatly. I really miss cafeteria, too. But, you know, I'm heartened by your results. They speak for themselves, the dedication of the staff and the students and the parents. Because Taylor's was a very diverse culture with a lot of unique challenges that we've talked about for years. But I, for one, I'm extremely thankful. And when you were talking about pushing students just a little bit out of the comfort zone, one thing that I will mention, that I'm very proud, that they do get to have storytime at times with Officer Gordon Knight. And if you can endure a story from Officer Gordon Knight, you have been challenged. You have been pushed, and you'll wind up being a better person. But thank you, Ms. Lingle.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a quick question. Sorry. And I was very impressed, and it's back on the report card. It just had to do with the science composite. One year, it's like off-the-charts high. I'm just curious, that just piqued my curiosity, what made that year special in the science? You hit a 90.
Right.
And I mean, the growth was impressive throughout the thing, and when you look at time. I'm just curious, because outliers always grab my attention, and that one grabbed my attention.
Number one, we had an amazing group of students that came through that year that were just... were just, they're at the middle school now, and hopefully they're flying high there as well. And then we did, between that 16 and 17 school year, we made a couple of staff changes that would cater to more of that particular person's strengths. And so it proved to be successful. And then, of course, the next year, we were still very well pleased with that score. But, you know, things tend to level off, and so we're excited to see what comes next. So thank you, Matt.
I'll, I'll finish up, I think. Wow. First of all, how proud I am of you. This, this is, this is for you. You have took a school that probably was struggling and made it one of the best schools we got by far. We're blessed to have great principals, but you have, I have been in the community a lot, and your name comes up, and it always is kindness, cares, loves kids, loves own kids. And it's just, that's a, that's such a tribute to you as a great principal, but also, that's a great principal just as a human being. I mean, I, I would hope someday to get a couple of those praises, but you're getting them, and you have earned them, and you deserve them. So it says a tremendous amount about what you do, and I just thank you for what you've done for that system and for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffus. I appreciate that.
I guess I'll finish up. One of the things that really concerned me, starting this year, was I just didn't see how we're going to keep students engaged. But to see your numbers of above 97%, that's pretty amazing. And it can be done.
Yes.
And you're proving that, and we're proud of you.
Thank you. One of the things that we pushed last year was, it was on our T-shirt for last year, was do what you can't. And, you know, we don't accept I can't at Taylorsville, we don't accept I don't know it is not yet, or we, we have to, just like that, the art example, this system finds a way. And hopefully Taylorsville is a great example of that. So thank you, Chairman Schrum.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, board members, if you'll notice in your packet of information, you have your committee assignments. That's always, that's always a tough one to do. A lot of people always want the same committee, and there's a lot of juggling around, but I think everybody will be happy. And also, do we have any reports from any committee members?
I would like to report from the Facilities Committee. And in your packet, there's an attachment, and it's the scope of work for Sugarloaf Elementary. I'm not going to read this, I'm getting to every, not involved, but the additions and the changes and the renovations that will be made there is an office addition in the cafeteria, there'll be new flooring, drop ceiling, there's new windows, painting, new lighting, and definitely new equipment for the kitchen. So y'all can read that at your leisure, and if there's any questions, I guess we should direct those to Mr. Schrum.
Would you also share the start date of that project?
Yes, ma'am. It is January the 25th, 21.
Okay, any other committee reports?
And I'll just say that as the renovations are taking place in the cafeteria at Sugarloaf, Kathy Caudle has worked it out, that the Sugarloaf staff will work out of the Ellen Dell kitchen to make the meals that will be taken back to Sugarloaf. Ellen Dell's cafeteria was the least utilized this year, for whatever reason, we don't know. But they're already working to make that transition so that we're ready to start this project on the 25th.
They wasn't using that cafeteria space right now with the spacing deal. Were they trying to utilize that to eat lunches before this?
No, for the most part, everybody's eating in their classrooms. But what they were using up until this point was the kitchen to prepare the food, and now they're going to do that at Ellen Dell and then transport it.
I didn't, I didn't know if any of them was using that during that time.
Now, some are.
Okay.
Some of their larger classes, just so that the children can spread out a little bit without a mask, some are going into the cafeteria, but none of the cafeterias are being utilized like they typically would in a normal time.
Any other questions with the facilities report?
As far as facilities, I appreciate the information on Sugarloaf because I had had several questions. And just being a member of the public to December, I really didn't have no idea what was going to take place. I appreciate the information. Talk about starting projects, wrapping up projects. What's the status central office project? Is that facilities, or we wanted superintendent update?
I can give you the update. Chris Campbell shared with our leadership team yesterday during our meeting, we have a weekly meeting, that Mr. Harrington's going to shoot for February 1st.
Okay.
But Chris Campbell was doubtful that that will happen. And what has delayed that project so much has been the limited materials and just not able to get materials. So they are working on other projects a lot of the time while they're waiting on materials to come in to work on central office.
I understand that.
But he's hopeful February 1st.
I think it's mostly aesthetics at this point, isn't it? With central office, sorry.
Yes, yes. Sorry.
Okay, any other committee reports? Okay, all right, this time I'll recognize Dr. Jennifer Hefner for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Schrum. This is attached in your agenda online, but I just want to start by saying how pleased I am to announce that the school system collected $7,640 for Alexander County's United Way campaign. And I just want to thank all of the employees that donated to this local organization. United Way in Alexander County directly supports children and families in the county. There's very little overhead for that organization. I'm grateful to Macy Jones. She has stepped up as the president of the group and has really taken a heavy load with United Way as they are without an executive director at the current time. But because they have continued to stay active, United Way Worldwide has selected school districts using a distribution formula based on data that includes rising COVID-19 rates, high percentage of Title I students, populations of color, and poverty, as well as unemployment rates. And Alexander County was one of the chosen systems. And because of that, we have been notified that we will be receiving an additional 31,000 facial masks in the upcoming weeks. So again, just so grateful for that local organization, and, but that came from United Way Worldwide. Also, I wanted to remind you all that this week is the week of our federal programs audit. I mentioned that last month. It is scheduled to be completed on Thursday. And because of that, I'm going to be involved in a couple of Zoom meetings. I will be part of the interview and audit process, as well as at 5 o'clock on Thursday, we come back together to get the audit report. And they talk to us about strengths in our federal programs, as well as maybe some areas to work on. So I would ask that on Thursday afternoon especially, Deborah's going to be fielding my calls. And if you don't care to call the office on Thursday instead of my cell phone, that would really be helpful because I'm finding that my cell phone, some days it's just blowing up, and it's very hard to stay focused on, on meetings and different things, and I hate to turn it off altogether. So if you will just call the office Thursday afternoon and talk to Deborah, that'll be great. Also, Macy Jones has asked, the Head Start refunding application is due on April 1st. And she wants to make sure that she has input from you all as far as any projects, plans, or goals that you would like to see Head Start to pursue in the 2021, '22 school year. And she said that you can share your suggestions and ideas with the Head Start Policy Council representative, that's Matt Cooksey, or you can contact her directly with suggestions or questions. And in the agenda, in this report, I've included her email address, as well as phone number and extension. I also became aware last week that there has been a tier designation change for Alexander County. Found out last week that our tier ranking has changed for 2021 from a tier two to a tier one county. And the county's economic distress rank was number 29, and it has moved to number 57. And then also, the unemployment ranking has changed pretty drastically. It moved from number 96 out of 100 to now it's number 34. So tier one counties are the most economically distressed, and this designation will help us not only with grant opportunities, but it should help us with some economic development funding. Because tier one counties, they typically receive more additional funding because of that economic distress. So if any of you have any grant writing opportunities, you need to know that, that we now have been designated as a tier one county. Also, the North Carolina General Assembly is scheduled to begin their long session tomorrow. They go back into session tomorrow, January 13th. I watched a webinar yesterday, Mr. Schrum came in just as that was finishing up. And I wanted you all to know that I know that you participated recently in the School Board Association priorities, but I shared with you the five priorities for the North Carolina Association of School Administrators. And there's a lot of overlap. The School Board Association, they have more than five. But I wanted you all to know that the Association of School Administrators, the first one is the additional COVID-19 relief and recovery. The second one is effective measurement of school and student success. And what that means is testing. We very much are pushing for changes in testing because of the way that things have been for the past 10 months. The third priority is excellent educators for every student. The fourth one is adequate and equitable resources for all schools and students. And the last one, efficient operations and safe learning environment for all schools and districts. And again, you'll be hearing a lot as far as these priorities from different groups, but I wanted you to be aware. And then the last thing, I included a slide, the ABC Science Collaborative, that's Dr. Benjamin's group. Dr. Benjamin is the one who zoomed in with us earlier this year. They made a presentation today at noon to North Carolina legislators. And the slide that I have included was part of the information shared with legislators today. And it's called School-Specific Metrics. And what they did, they talked about cluster events and different kinds of events that could happen in schools. The first one being rapidly increasing number of infections that are linked epidemiog- la, 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 within a school. Sorry, I can't say the word very well, obviously. But then the, the action that should be taken when that happens. So there are four different things that, that we are looking for, and then the recommendations as far as action that should be taken. And the first one is district leadership discusses the safety benefits of remote learning for the individual school with the school board, an independent body, local health department, and key stakeholders. So I just want you all to see what was shared today with legislators, and also to let you know not only how situations will be handled, but I wanted you to know that to date, we have only had one cluster in the school system. And the health department will tell you that it was a weak correlation in the school. It happened at Taylorsville. It was confirmed over Christmas break. So because of the timing of the cluster, nothing really had to happen as far as the school. I didn't have to call you all to say, I'm putting Taylorsville on a total remote learning environment because we were out for Christmas break for two weeks. And the timing of it played a part in some of that. But the health department will tell you that some of, of the links were a little bit weak, W-E-A-K at best. But regardless, we've only had one since returning on August 17th. And just to also let you know that Donna Mayberry, our lead nurse, she is the person who collects numbers weekly that I share with you in the highlights of the week. But also Robin, Dr. Robin Hilton is instrumental in communicating back and forth with the health department, and I'm involved in a lot of those conversations also. So we are monitoring situations and numbers every single day. And just wanted to reiterate to you all that metrics do matter, they're being monitored. And I just open it up for any questions at this time.
I think showing that there is a specific guideline that we're following. And, you know, we've, we've had, we've had times when we didn't have that because the state kind of put us out on a limb. But, but that's a good step forward, that we actually have specific guidelines. And I think it's pretty amazing that we've had one cluster in this time period, and the fact that it fell during a time that we weren't in school was.
That's when it was confirmed, as far as when they did all the contact tracing.
Right.
It ended up being either six or seven individuals. And you all know that five linked cases in one, in one building is considered a cluster. So, but again, those links were weak. And, but it has been reported to the state as being a cluster. But it is the only one that we have had since August.
And then also to reiterate one thing that you mentioned, which is a statement that you made, you have the ability to take one school and move it back to virtual if that's what we need to do.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's, that's, that's a, a big decision, a hard decision, but we're glad that we have that ability.
Absolutely. And can I go on record also as saying, as superintendent, I have the ability to change a decision. If we hear that weather is predicted, and I call a remote day, and I have to tell you, I sleep better now because I don't have people out on roads at 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 in the morning communicating back to me the conditions of roads. It's so much easier just if it's predicted with a heavy likelihood, it's so easy to say, we'll have a remote day. And we try to watch the weather closely enough that we prepare days in advance. Like last week, we were talking to principals on Tuesday and Wednesday to have everybody ready for the event of a remote day on Friday. But I, as superintendent, can always go back and change that decision if inclined. And, and, you know, I, I heard the community, I saw the mad ugly faces, the emojis on Facebook about how we had a remote day, but you also saw that we didn't have enough snow to play in. So I, I just wanted to go on record, Chairman Schrum, to say that, that I can change it if so, if so inclined.
Right.
And, you know, if the good Lord sees fit, that we have a good old fashioned snow that's deep enough to play in.
No virtual snowmen.
I'm not going to ask anybody to send me a virtual snowman. No. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the superintendent's report?
Those were wonderful words regarding a good old fashioned snow day, because rest assured that there's some folks in social media that might not reach out to the superintendent, but they'll sure ring up even school board members outside their district. So hats off, let the record state that she does have the discretion, that if there is a good old snow day, and we all know that this last snow was definitely not a good old snow day unless you lived in West Jefferson. But she has the capability and the discretion. Snow days and remote days are not school board decisions.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, let's move on to old business. We'll recognize Ms. Sharon Mahaffey, the Chief Financial Officer, for second reading of board policy.
We have six board policies up for second reading tonight. I have asked for input. I received no questions or comments. And so I would like for those, to ask you for approval for those on second reading.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation?
I'm going to approve those.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, so we have a motion to approve from Ms. Prentice Ryan.
Second for Matt Cooksey.
Matt Cooksey with a second. Any discussion? Everyone in favor?
I have one quick question. It's not directly about any of the policies. When we get these changes, I know there used to be a lot of wording because of general sta- because of general statutes in Raleigh and stuff like that. When we see these, are they always general statute changes? Or they may be recommendations from District Leadership? Is there ever a way to know differences when we're looking at them? I guess if that's the way to say it. Is there, I mean, even colors to the way they're highlighted changes? Or, or do you ever tell us if it's coming a local decision versus a general statute? Do you know, did I make sense what I'm trying to say?
Yes. Our, when we do the policy changes, they're generally from the School Boards Association. Which means they're being prompted by the change in legislation or State Board Policy. And it could be federal legislation or state legislation. If it were a change, I, I can just let you know if it's a change based on something the schools have asked for.
Okay.
And typically, our policy committee would be involved.
Yes.
If it's something from us or the schools or something like that.
I'm still learning. So, I hope you don't get tired of the questions.
That's okay.
I want to be informed, make sure I'm, I'm asking the right questions at the right time. But when you look at those policies, I mean, I used to, I used to look at them when I was part of the teachers' association. And I know a lot of times it was just simple wording. And it amazed me that people in Raleigh had enough time sometimes to sit there and change one little word. So, thank you.
And also to point out, usually these changes are also vetted by the School Board Association attorneys also.
Yes. And also by Chris Campbell from Campbell Shatley.
Right. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to, to approve the second reading of policy numbers fifteen-ten, partially through seventy-two-eighty. Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries. And if you'll carry on with the first readings, please.
Okay. We have eight policies up for first reading tonight. Most of these are minor changes, so you won't have a hard time or take long to go through them. And I'll bring them back. I'll ask for some input and bring them back next month.
Thank you very much. Okay, now I'll recognize Ms. Jessica Anderson, Director of Accountability for Proposed Calendar Change for 2020 through 2021.
Good evening. To be brief, what we are looking at changing are the required remote days that we put into the plan due to SB 704 at the beginning of the school year. When we moved into Plan B, we now have a remote day on Wednesdays. It seemed more conducive to move some of these in the spring semester to those Wednesdays in order to balance out the A and B days. So, I'll summarize quickly what we did. January twenty-ninth, that remote day has been moved, proposed to be moved to January twenty-seventh. The remote day for February nineteenth has been proposed to be moved to February seventeenth. The remote day on March eleventh has been proposed to be moved to March tenth. And just a quick change to balance out days, March thirtieth is proposed to be a B day for middle and high schools. Any questions regarding those?
So, you're moving those, you're moving those, the dates you're moving them to are listed as optional workdays?
They are. That was a specific nuance to 704 is that the required remote days, you're required to put them in the calendar, five of them, even though we ended up having obviously more than five. They could be counted as optional or required teacher workdays. So, that's not going to be, I anticipate, a typical thing in calendar law. But for this year, we've definitely used it. Did that sufficiently answer your question?
Yes, yes, yes.
Any other questions?
On remote learning days, what constitutes a full day?
What constitutes a full day, did you say?
Yeah, the measurement.
So, what we have classified this semester, well, this year, we're required to submit to the state our, our daily planned hours, minutes at, before the school year begins. Remote days this year constitute four-point-five hours. And that is the same for elementary, middle, and high. That will not be consistent next year, but as of right now, that is what they are.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
Did you say four-point-five?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Well, can, can I just ask? Because I know there was a lot of questions about snow day versus remote day. And I know this information we were sent. If we have a remote day-
Yes, ma'am.
Then we can count four-point-five hours.
This year, yes, ma'am.
This year.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, we only have to make up?
We don't have to make it up. It's actually deducted from that excess time that was built in hour-wise.
Right. But if we would have called just a full snow day, we have to make that up?
No, we have to deduct a, a full day.
Well, that's what I mean by making a, yes.
From the time that has been backed.
From the, the banked time.
Yes, the banked time. If you call a snow day, then you have to deduct a full day from that banked time.
So, any time we can call a remote day, we don't lose as much time out of the banked.
We're banking time, right?
Correct, yeah. Correct. But also, do teachers have to make up the day if we call a snow day?
The teachers have to work two-hundred-fifteen days a year.
So, if we call a snow day?
So, if we call a snow day for students, staff either have to use leave or they have to make up the time.
Okay. So, that has not changed?
Or, or they have to work.
Okay.
No, no, those options as far as inclement weather days, none of that has changed.
Okay.
So, they work, they use leave, or they make up time.
And that time is not held to the four-point-five, is it?
Oh, no, they have to work a full day.
They got to work a full day. So, in a surrounding county that called a snow day but an optional teacher work day, they had to make up that time as a full day, not a virtual day.
But if we call a remote day, the teacher doesn't have to make up anything?
No, they're working from home.
Correct. Thank you.
And we have no flexibility. It says clearly in the law, teachers work two-hundred-fifteen days a year.
Right.
I just wanted to add something as a point of clarification. We have communicated with principals that this year, because it was decided at the beginning of the year and submitted to DPI, that the remote day would be four-point-five hours. Next year, for elementary students, it will be two-point-five hours. And the student has to complete that work in order to be counted as present for the day. So, they still have the option of having an absence. And they have five days to complete that work and be counted present for the day. So, it is really not a particular hardship starting next year, but we're bound to the four-point-five hours for this year because of the, the COVID regulations and the way that we had to submit it. So, I, I think that that's an important, important point of reference for the board to understand if you get complaints about remote calls. It's maximum at the elementary level, two-point-five hours. And they have five days to complete that two-point-five hours worth of work. We have given the schools the authority to use some discretion. We don't expect a five-year-old to sit in front of a computer for two-point-five hours. But then again, a fifth grader might be able to spend three hours. But we have to decide on the same number of hours regardless of the grade level because in power school, it has to be coded that way. So, I think that we really, I, I think what the public doesn't always see or doesn't always understand is that we went back and forth with this for hours upon hours for hours, thinking about had school input, principal input, instructional coach input, about what would be best for kiddos. So, that two-point-five hours really saves the potential of making up a day for staff and students. So, I think there's a lot of stuff that goes on that people aren't really aware of. So, I just, because it's been such a hot topic lately, I wanted to share that.
Well, one, one thing that, that I think that this entire board in their respective districts are keenly aware of is we hear the anxiety amongst the parents who, number one, they're not teachers. They don't espouse to be teachers anymore. And it only exacerbates it that much more if you have an entire family that's in quarantine for two weeks and you've got those parents at home with their kids becoming teachers for two weeks and doing it virtually or doing packets, et cetera. You know, all of us, hats off to those parents because I, I know it's happened because I've heard about it. And I welcome the day when we can get back to normalcy. Normalcy, meaning that the parents drop their kids off at school Monday through Friday. But we hear the parents. We hear their anxieties. And frankly, I, I hear that our kids are falling behind. Our kids, our children, they are resilient. Oftentimes, they know more about the remote learning and the technology than their parents do. But, you know, it's okay if you need to reach out. But feel free to reach out to the administration at the Alexander County School System. Do not be afraid to talk to the principal. Do not be reserved about calling up the superintendent or the associate superintendents. They are there to listen. And moreover, they are there to serve. And if we have clear communications, because oftentimes, if you ask a board member a specific intricate question, we're going to have to say, "I don't know the answer, but I can refer you to the person who can answer that." So, we feel the parents' anxiety. We feel the children's anxiety. Thank goodness my children, and I'm just using that for an example, are much smarter than I am. If I, I would not be able to tutor them. I would not, I couldn't do it when they were in middle school. And, and now they're in high school. So, that's why we have an obligation as board members to bring these questions forward, to bring these concerns forward. It's certainly not to drive a wedge between people and administration. It's actually to build a bridge of communication between these parents who are struggling immensely and our administration. Because that, that's why they're there forty and fifty and sixty hours a week.
And I'll reiterate what David said. I'm living it at home. I personally have a fifth grader and eighth grader. My fifth grader, she loves school. Her brother's kind of like her daddy, his daddy used to be. He, he went and he, he got through. I'm seeing my daughter struggle. Remote, remote learning is taking a toll on our families. We talk a lot about socio-emotional. And bottom line, that boils down to one word called mental, in my opinion. And I think that's taking a toll. I know, I know the frustration a lot of families have. We just come back from Christmas break and last week, a lot of them was frustrated. But, you know, like David said, you know, we're hearing it. I, I'm, I'm living it. And remote learning is, is not for everyone. And my son came home yesterday with a packet ready to go for the next time he's out. And, you know, I, I commend our teachers because when they have to send packets, because a lot of our kids don't have connectivity, that's additional work. So, if we're updating the packets on a regular basis, that's more work we're putting on the teachers. So, you know, I'm, I'm sharing, like David said, that's what we're hearing. And I, and I, I forwarded my concerns to you because that's your call. But I just want, like David said, I want to share what I've heard. And I, I'm seeing it in my own household. When people share, I don't have to question it because I'm seeing it.
Any further questions? I can say that one of the issues is when we crafted the calendar at the beginning of the year under SB 704, we had no idea, nor did anyone, if we were going to remain in C, B, A, or a combination of the two. And we are bound to meet the minimum of one-thousand-twenty-five hours. So, with now the elementary schools back in, in A, their time looks better than other schools, than the middle schools and high schools. It's, it is not a perfect equation this year. But I think we've done very well with the, the vagueness and the variability of what we faced.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
I just feel like that, you know, parents and students as well, you know, we're facing challenges throughout the, the country now. And sometimes the easy thing to do is get on social media and tell about how bad the school administration or the school board members are. And it might just be a way some of them just want to vent because that's when you, like David said, sitting in front of your TV or computer or whatever for so many hours a day, you can only take so much. Now, I'm for one, I say bring back the good old-fashioned snow days that you, you and David was talking about. We hadn't had many of them in a while. But we've got to get back to education and educating the kids. And ro- remote learning is probably not the best way. But you know what? It's the adaptable way right now. And it's all we've got. So, you know, people can attack me all they want to on Facebook. I've put up with it for a long time. I'm not going to lose any sleep over it. But I'm going to do what I feel like is best for the school system and the children and, and the parents and the staff. And some things are not our decision to make. And this being one of them. So, but I do think that we need to try to get the communications closer with the administration, with the schools, with the superintendent, instead of trying to, you know, go on social media whenever you feel like it's an appropriate time to do. And just because the other schools around you are getting a snow day and you're not getting one. And I've had several calls about it. I mean, I'm one of the ones that's probably gotten some calls. And I don't know how many other board members have. But, I mean, I understand. But I understand that's probably where the frustration is mostly coming from. It's probably from, you know, just sitting around and having to quarantine and everything else. So, I just think we need to get on about the business and try to do the best we can do with what we've got to work with right now. That's all. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, we've heard the proposed calendar changes for 2020 and 2021. Do we have a motion to approve?
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's my fault. I completely forgot to mention, March ninth will not be changed on the calendar. But I did want to let you know that Alexander Central, that is an ACT date option. So, ACT has provided us three dates in which to give the ACT. However, all of them fall on a Tuesday. So, Alexander Central will be converting just them, March ninth, to a B day. And they will communicate that to their students, staff, and, and families. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that.
Oh, no problem. No problem. Okay. So, we've heard the changes. Do we have a motion on the floor to approve?
Move.
The motion by Marty Lautermit, who have a second?
Second for Matt Cooksey.
Okay. Everyone in favor, please, oh, any discussion? Any further discussion? Okay. Everyone in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you very much. I know it's been a tough year, but hang in there. Thank you.
Got to see you all a great many times for calendar, when normally it's once. So, it's been a pleasure.
Well, guess what? It's time to start working on the 2021-22 calendar.
See you soon.
At this time, I'll recognize Dr. Betsy Curry, Associate Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction for Comprehensive Needs Assessment and School Improvement Plans.
Good evening, Chairman Schrum, members of the Board of Education, and Dr. Hefner. Governance, Government Statute 115-C-105.27D requires that local boards of education either accept or reject school improvement plans for each school within the jurisdiction. So, I had Deborah share those plans with you in the comprehensive needs assessment about three weeks ago. So, you've had time to review them. And I'm wondering if you would be able to approve those Board of Education plans this evening and the, the comprehensive needs assessments.
Okay. Do we, do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion, the motion was made by Scott Bowman and the second by Bridget Ryan. Okay. And any discussion?
Thank you for all the work they put into it. I've been part of one of them plans, writing it. I, I don't know if everybody up here, you know, involved with our leadership meetings at the high school years ago. And a lot of work goes into that. And-
There really is. They do a great job and are really trying, as you can see from Ms. Lingel's report, to look at all the different sources of data to make sure that they are doing the best job possible for children.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have a, let's, let's vote. Everyone in favor- Everyone in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll go into executive session by General, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, parentheses, A, parentheses, 6. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Move.
Second.
I didn't hear where those came from, so.
I don't know who made, David made the motion.
David Odom made the motion and Scott Bowman the second. Any discussion? Everyone in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries, and meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, everyone who was in attendance. Thank you. School Board-